How you doing, man?
Y'all ready? We're going hot.
That's right.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call tonight's meeting to order for the board of supervisors' work session. Mr. Bowen, you mind giving us a invocation, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Let's go to the Father. Lord, again, we come together and, Lord, we need your wisdom, Lord. As many times I say with myself, you don't have much to work with, Lord, but you've been good to me. And Father, so we need you here. We ask you to bless the ones who are less fortunate than us. There's as many out there that are just looking for the next meal, and so you blessed us so many times over and over. And now we just ask all these things that Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, amen.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowen. Appreciate that. Let's give a pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you all for that. Next, board members, is approval of the agenda for tonight's work session? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, or is there anything we need to add? Mr. Bowen?
No, sir. Once you get approved, I do want the audience to know that we're streaming tonight and that we do have to go to closed session, which I mentioned to our presenter tonight, and that shouldn't be no more than ten minutes, so be patient with us. We'll get back out here.
Okay.
I move to approve the agenda.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. All right, next, if someone could read the motion, go into closed session, please. Item C.
I'll do it. Pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body specifically relating to personnel matters now pending in county administration.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now going into closed session.
I'll make that motion to reconvene in session.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now going into closed session. All right, board members, I need somebody to make a motion for us to reconvene in open session.
I'll make that motion to reconvene in session.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we need to certify the meeting here. I need someone to read the certification of closed meeting. Any volunteers?
I'll do it. I've got my glasses tonight.
Let me switch with you. Read this one, not have him sign.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Nottaway County, Virginia, has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Nottaway County, Virginia hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board of Supervisors, and no action was taken in the closed meeting regarding the items discussed.
I need a second, board members?
Second.
All right, Mr. Bowen, would you poll the board, please?
Yes. Did we talk about anything else in closed session except for what has been read by Mr. Ingram? Mr. Collins?
I certify.
Certify.
I certify.
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 Okay, all certified, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county administrator. So what I thought I would do tonight is, especially now that there's some new board members as well that didn't hear the initial presentation. However, it is on video, so you can take a look at that, you know, for some of the things that I discussed. I did provide you with a copy tonight of what we did under Phase One. And if I could just kind of give you an overview of the, really the challenges, and I think the opportunities that we looked at. So, as you know, the Notaway County landfill is a relatively small landfill, as landfills go. And one of the things that we identified and spoke quite a bit about at the earlier meeting was really some of the economies of scales, or lack thereof of economies of scales. So, you know, why are your costs what they are? And while we did a 20,000-foot review of some of the financials for you, you know, we did identify that your cost per ton were very high, close to $90 to $100 a ton is what it's actually costing the county to operate the landfill. And again, those reasons are, you just don't have, there's a certain amount of equipment that's required for a landfill, whether you put one ton there or you put 500 tons there. And so you've got fixed costs. So those fixed costs can only be helped if you can amortize those out over greater volumes, which you don't have. Your volumes have been relatively stable. There was a report just out for the end of this year. Every year, the tonnages get reported to the state. Public information, every landfill has to report it. It's called a SWIR report. Your tonnage this year was right around 17,000 tons, I believe, which is about where you've been running. But again, relatively small. And so what we looked at was, what really, going forward, what are your options? From a financial standpoint, beyond your operating costs, and we went into some of those, and kind of where your funds are coming from and how you're funding it. Obviously, you'd like to fund it through user fees. So if somebody paid a dollar over the scale, that should cover the cost. Well, you're clearly far from that, and in fact, you know, you couldn't charge enough money. Because much of the tonnage that comes in is really provided to the residents, is, you know, part of the general fund that they have their trash, that they can bring their trash there. You know, your commercial haulers are paying for the waste. But again, they're paying, you have to be somewhat competitive, too, because the good news and bad news is you're surrounded by other landfills, other very large landfills that make, that are very competitive, and they want tonnage. So, you know, as you know, Amelia has a landfill, there's one down in Ludenburg, there's the Authority down in Mecklenburg that has a landfill, Republic Waste has a landfill, and these are all really within almost driving range. Some of them, very short driving range, which is, some of that's outlined in the study. So, landfill costs are broken down into a number of different things, but I try to put them together. So there's the operating costs, to operate the equipment, your payroll, the scales, all of that operations. Then there's the monitoring costs, which is really ongoing, and that's to check the groundwater on a regular basis, to check for any gas that may be migrating, to check stormwater, to handle leachate. All of these things are kind of fixed items. So, what we looked at was, what are the options going forward? So, you have, you're in the, next to last cell. Landfills are broken into sections, like a loaf of bread. In fact, some of the drawings that I gave you there will kind of outline what that looks like. You know, this drawing kind of shows you, you know, where the cells break down. And the one on the far left is not built yet, where you're in the one right next to it. So, we did a capacity analysis, and that large document had that that's what that is, that's a capacity analysis. So what we do is we survey the landfill, and we look at the prior survey that we did, and we look at the amount of tons you put in, and we are able to calculate how much remaining airspace is. And you'll even see a chart there that shows pluses and minuses. That's how many more feet you could put in of trash on those drawings. So, I guess the good news is you have about five and a half years of capacity at your present volume. Now, that could change a little, get a big storm, that might go up a little, might come down a little, but five and a half years. If you build the next cell, it's another five and a half years. The challenge with that is the cost. You, so what we presented to the prior board was, do nothing. You know, maybe work to become more efficient, see if there are some things you can nibble along the edges to try to become more efficient. But again, there are some limitations, as I've outlined already, in doing that. And consider, you know, building the next cell five years from now. So again, that'll give you a 10 or 11-year window before you would run out of space. The county purchased additional land some time ago, with the thought that they might be able to expand the landfill someday. And that is a possibility, but a very lengthy permitting possibility with an uncertain ending, and quite frankly, very expensive to do. Permitting a new cell is very expensive, and there's just a lot of work and public comment, and just a lot of work to do. It is possible, but what we would end up with would be spending a lot of money, again, for a relatively low volume, that over time is only going to get more expensive. But that is an option. We looked at, could it, would it be possible for you to bring in more trash? So the obvious question is, well, if economies of scale, can I get more trash? Well, that really depends on where you are. And as I said, the good news, bad news is you're surrounded by other landfills that are competing with you that are already built out. So the likelihood is probably not. It's probably not. You're, you're too far away from the heavier metropolitan areas to make that drive versus they could go to Amelia, they could go to Ludenburg, you know, and are already doing that. So, that's probably unlikely. And to look at, would there be somebody that would like to use your airspace? So that, that is really the kind of, where we're at, kind of the last option we got to was, you have this airspace which you paid for in the permitting and construction process. So you have, you know, a five-year capacity that you can keep using. Even though it's expensive, you've paid the capital up cost of it. Versus, do you close it earlier, or do you fill it up and do you plan for the next cell? The next cell is probably two and a half, $3 million to build in addition. You just get that built. Again, that would be four years away from now, but that's what it would cost. And then your closure costs, which you may already be aware of. Regulations in, really in the country, but Virginia's regulations are part of the federal regulations, that every operator of a landfill has to put money aside to close the landfill and to care for it for 30 years after it's closed. And the reason for that is, and it applies to government as well as private landfills, it's really to protect the public, so that if, if you walked away from the landfill, you know, the county's not going to walk away, but businesses potentially could, that there's enough money set aside that if the state had to step in, they could take that money and close the landfill and then care for it for 30 years. 30 years is a, is a pretty standard number across the country of post-closure care. So once we close your landfill once and for all, put soil on it, start to grow grass, you have to watch it for 30 years. And that's all the groundwater monitoring that we currently do now, that has to continue. And if it's, at the end of 30 years, it's cleared up, that there aren't any other contaminants, and you don't have any problems really now. You had had some, some hits in the past, but the landfill's in relatively good shape, and the hits in the past were from some of the unlined sections, not the lined section. Lined landfills really don't leak. Unlined landfills did leak. But you're really in good shape with that, but that's not to say that other things couldn't happen. There are new regulations for other testing for PFOS you may have heard of. So there are potentially other costs down the road that will have to be bared. So then, really the option that the board kind of gave the nod to, it was not a vote, but it was certainly, this seems like a good direction, was to look at building a transfer station and hauling your trash to another landfill, again, through a competitive bid situation. And you also have another opportunity, and I did quite a bit of calculation for you. Your convenience centers, as you know, around the county, and the map is on here, you can see, which you're all very familiar with, I'm sure, but, but it really shows you just where they are, so.
Which one are you looking at, Mr. Hoke?
This one.
So, you know, as you can see, is some of the convenience centers in certain parts of the county would be close, very close to Amelia. It really would be, the truck could pick up the box there, and those boxes, compactors are very efficient at convenience centers because they're heavy, and economies of scale. So if you can get eight or 10 tons in a compactor.
We're not running compactors at the convenience centers, are we?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And each one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All of them?
No, not at Janito and not on Mill Road. Y'all on Louis Towne, I know.
Yeah, and that, that's in that report, you'll see some of that, but compactors are very good for convenience centers. You can get the weight, the truck makes the haul. Again, the truck doesn't care if it has a ton in it, or if it has eight tons in it. Or 10 tons, ideally, that's pretty much your capacity. So, from, from many of these convenience centers, you could run some of the waste directly to a landfill, wouldn't have to double-handle it at all, and basically pay for your tipping cost and pay for your driver.
What is that typically per ton, if they were to haul, like haul direct to Amelia?
So that's really going to depend on a bid situation?
Just in a range.
What does it cost a resident and a non-resident to dump in Amelia?
You don't know if they've got a posted rate. Typically, what waste in the large landfills do is, it's based on volume, they look at you as volume. So if you put a bid out and say, look, I've got 10,000 tons a year, they'll give you a price on 10,000 tons a year. And the range, right now, somewhere is between $25 and $35 a ton.
And we're paying 90 right now?
That's what I was thinking, same.
Well, again, the ninety-
It's costing us 90.
We've got to be careful, and I think that's the next thing that I'll do for you, is to break that out, because there are some fixed costs that don't go away. So, that, that's the challenge. There's going to be a, there's going to be a curve where some of the costs don't go away. Your groundwater monitoring, gas monitoring all has to stay, so I've got to make sure that's out of that $95. So your capital cost also was in that, was in that number. So that capital cost can start to go away, and your post-closure care number can be minimized. It will come down after you close the landfill. So right now, you have $7.8 million basically in your general fund for the closure of the landfill. Once you close the landfill, that, that number comes down, because you'll essentially spend some of that money. You'll spend some of that money to close it, and then you won't have the operating cost on the landfill and, or minimal, and then you just have the monitoring cost. So I'll have to break that out. So.
Mr. Hoke, if I could, to answer your question, your question, Mr. Collins, and Mr. Tobe, I had reached out to a couple of landfills and asked about ranges for hauling. And if I'm right, if my recollection is correct, it's roughly 23 tons, and they do it per trip, anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 per load. And we're running roughly 60 tons a day, so you're looking at two truckloads a day, which would run your costs $2,000 to $2,400. There's going to be a day where you may run a third load once it overlaps, one day a week.
Do they charge the same thing for the third load, the third of a load, or you, or you, if we do something to what he suggested, running these trucks straight out of the collection areas, what's the cost of that?
Oh, that would be our cost. That would be our trucks running it. We're talking about like if-
If we brought them all to one locality and reloaded them, is that what you're saying?
No, it's if we brought it to the tipping station and dumped it, and a private company picked them up. See, we always have the option to buy our own truck for hauling, hire a driver, and all that.
You talked about that, yeah.
So, but if it's another company, right now, from what they've shared with me, is right now the cost would be anywhere from $1,000 to $1,200 for an independent company to pick it up. But our people would be loading it, therefore making sure that the truck's got the 21 or 23 tons, whatever it can hold, and not 10.
Is that 12, is that $1,000 or $1,200 to get rid of it and to haul it, or was that just to haul it over there and then we pay a price per ton?
That's it.
So this is the hauling, trip charge, not a tonage.
Pretty much, as I understood it, yeah.
And is this, like he was somebody put on bid?
Yes, you can put it out every year, or two years, three years, five years.
Yeah, generally, you, you try to offer a five-year contract, or you could do a one-year with renewables, you know, provided the performance is good, you'll get the better deal that way. Typically, it's, it is broken into two pieces. It's, it is one number it'll come to, but it's really, there's a price per ton in the landfill, like I said, maybe 25 to 35. And then there's a price for the trucking, and that does depend on which landfill. So, it's really time. So it's how many miles is it to the landfill, and in that package, I identified how far they are, and they're surprisingly close. That's why I said, I'm not sure that it would make sense to even bring all the trash to a transfer station someday. The boxes that made sense, you could bring them to the closest landfill, because again, the less we touch it, the less we have to process it, the more efficient it is, even the more environmentally it is.
A trucking company will want a minimum, too, though. If it won't, but 28 miles, they would get a minimum of, of that $1,000 or whatever, $300.
Well, yeah, they, they-
Because they're not going to do it by the mile, they're going to have a minimum.
They're going to, they're going to give you a price per trip, basically.
Independent of what landfill they go to with.
Well.
But we did, that agreement that we're talking about, the bid process, is that going to be specific to one landfill?
No, you'd put out a bid and you'd ask for, you'd ask for a bid from any landfill that wanted to give you a bid. And you can even go one step further, you can have two, many counties have two contracts. They have one contract with the landfill, and another contract with just a trucking company.
Ah, kind of.
And then another option, as Mr. Rock said, some counties choose to buy their own truck and use their county employees to do it. So there's, there's a lot of options to, how to handle it. So the transfer station is pretty simple building, based on needing 60 tons. And again, 60 tons, if we could get some of these heavy compactors out of it, that 60 could become 30. So if that 60 became 30, again, it's less tonnage to handle here and transfer. A transfer station in a county such as Notaway, I would, would expect would probably just be a 60-by-60 Butler building, just a metal building. The, the most expensive part of the building is that we need elevation, so we want to be able to get a truck against a wall and have elevation. Well, your convenience center at the landfill already has some elevation to it that's built up. So we would have to engineer how to put the building up here, there'd be a chute, basically, the tractor trailer would drive under, and they dump the trash inside the building. Generally, they don't even have doors, it's a great big open front. And then trash gets dumped, and then you can take the trash and put it into the, with a, just a wheel, rubber tire wheel loader.
So that trash is not compacted?
Well, you're, you're basically putting it into the trailer and packing it down with the, with the machine. And yet, Mr. Rock's point is very important, because you want to make sure you get, because again, that you've got a fixed mileage cost for that truck to go to point B. So you want to get the legal limit in it, which is roughly 22 tons these trucks will hold.
It's look like to me, it would be mighty hard to put 22 tons of loose trash just compact with a rubber tire loader. Would it be feasible to, to put a compactor inside that Butler building on that platform, compact, and then put it in that trailer?
Yes, there are some, there are some compaction systems that do that, but I would say that you're probably, and that becomes really critical. If you get a load of mattresses in, it's going to be hard to get the weight. But generally, the mix of municipal solid waste, you can usually get pretty good. You can normally get pretty consistent 18 to 22 tons of regular household trash. Construction lumber and things like that sometimes are lighter. There are different ways you can compact it, you can get a bigger loader to be able to put more down pressure to pack into the box, because the loader's over top of it, and the loader's packing down. So as the trash gets, gets in that trailer, it gets pretty heavy. So, but again, a simple building, you'd still operate the convenience center probably at that site. In fact, there, you know, some counties actually have two outside places for trailers on either wing, and then one in the building, and the one on the wing, the residents can just throw the trash into the side container, and then they take that container and pull it in, and then pack it the rest of the way.
So are these going to be hauled on containers or trailers? Because these trucks I see from New York, going up 95 hauling trash to Virginia, is a 13-six-foot tall truck with massive volume inside of it. There's no, it's no roll-offs or nothing like that.
No, these are, that's what they are. They're either walking floors.
Why, exactly, walking floors. There's no roll-off or nothing.
But a lot of the larger landfills, they didn't dump the whole trailer, so they're just regular-
Band-type trailer.
Type trailers, and at the landfill, they pick up the whole truck and just slide out the trash.
I see Ludenburg's like a, me and Mr. Bowen went over there, and-
So, so what, dumped the whole thing. That's where they used to dump grain in Petersburg. What about the, the, if we decide to take some of, from some of these areas, the compacted trash already, that would come into that Butler, Butler building and already compact it? If we didn't run them trucks over to Amelia or Ludenburg, can we, do we have a made, way to get it from being compacted? It looked like to me that would save a whole lot of-
Oh, yeah. You would dump the compactor right on the floor, and some of the ones that are close to landfill, you probably would.
And then push them right in that?
Yeah, well, you, again, depending if the elevation, if the, the ideal transfer station is, it's literally that we can push it, that, but that's 14 feet, we need a 14-foot pit. If we can't get 14 foot, sometimes we'll put a, a wall like this.
Push up against it and dump it in.
And lift it and throw it over it. That just depends on the engineering. If we, we try to- And flip it and throw it over it. That just depends on the engineering. If we, we try to get it-
Little dirt work and concrete.
Right. But that compacted waste, the loader would pick up and just throw right into the trailer. That's how it goes now. So I think what's gonna happen in the numbers, you know, if this is a direction that makes sense to you, is you're gonna see, you're gonna draw a line in the sand on your closure. Now, that's a long line, because as I mentioned, it's the thirty-year post-care, but that thirty years is clicking every year. So while most of us here won't be involved with the county thirty years from now, you know, our predecessors will. They're gonna have the bill, and our predecessor residents will have the bill. So this is a way to kind of draw a line in the sand and have the costs be incremental to the services. And the unknowns of landfills and environmental, you know, our, our company's business is managing all this. And it's a lot of work, and it's getting harder and harder to do, and more and more expensive.
Surprise expenses.
Yeah.
Mr., do you, do you happen to work with Scott County? Scott County? Second Pois County in the state of Virginia, they got a tipping station. Their tax rate is about nineteen cents higher than ours. And they've been operating this tipping station for about seventeen years, and it's the second Pois County in the state. And their tax rate's a lot higher than ours. I would be curious as to what went wrong with the overall county, not at the tipping station. Maybe they would be the first Pois County if it wasn't for the tipping station. But I'm, I'm just saying, I, I was, somebody brought that to my attention, who owns some land in Scott County. He said, don't make no decision till you visit Scott County.
Well, one of the things that I absolutely would recommend is that you need, you need a transfer station that works for your county. You'll see some counties, and we can show you different transfer stations that we've done. Some of them are very elaborate and very expensive.
Maybe that's one like that, I don't know.
You don't need that, okay? What you need is, you need functionality, and you need something sized to the volume that you have. And should your volume go up, you wanna have the flexibility to expand upon it.
And it will go up, as, as the population grows in the county, it's certain to go up.
And it, and it will. So, so you have to make all those considerations. But again, I can show you a number of rural, very simple transfer stations that are easy to operate. Essentially, one operator can operate the transfer station on a loader, look after it. They're required. They're also required to be licensed, the same as a landfill. So the licensed operator would have to be there to make sure nothing inappropriate goes into the boxes. You know, they're still checking the waste, as you do now. So, and that's gonna be the, the, how do you, what's the best way to do this transition for you? That would, would start to show some savings, and, and again, plan for the future, take away some of the risk for you going forward. And again, put a pin in a future date that you can start to redo. Because after thirty years, theoretically, and we've closed a lot of landfills forever, here in Virginia. After thirty years, you don't have to do the groundwater monitoring, you don't have to do the, the gas monitoring, and you don't, you know, all these things stop. And that's significant amount of money every year that you pay for.
And just to, just to give, just to input, if you don't mind.
Sure.
I just told some of the board members, I had our finance director, Martina Chandler, she did some numbers. So as of twelve twenty-three, twelve thirty-one twenty-three, the landfill, just the landfill budget, okay? So that's six months. They've, with sixty, they've spent sixty-three percent of that budget. The big line items, hauling leachate, treatment, we spent a hundred and sixty-three percent of what we budgeted for. A hundred and sixty-three in six months, and we still got six months to go. Is it the same six months in comparison, though?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't change.
We've got a truck fixed.
Sixty tons a day.
Truck, or the truck's gonna be fixed.
So that is one of the things that'll go down. When you close the landfill, your leachate will start to diminish.
Equipment repairs, ninety-three percent. Hard to keep stuff, you gotta keep it on the road, anyway. Equipment repairs, somebody, trucks, dozers, everything, that's right.
Ninety-three percent in six months.
Ninety-three percent of. A hundred and seventy thousand dollars we budgeted. We spent a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety so far in D some.
Buying new equipment, they didn't know the capital expenses.
And I, and you don't even know, but the, the leachate truck that is now in the shop for thirty-five thousand dollars. Thirty-eight, excuse me. Thirty-eight, right.
What do you call the truck again?
It's a leachate.
Yeah.
It's the water, the excess.
So the truck, is the problem right now with the trailer?
The truck.
For thirty-five thousand, it need a motor?
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, what's wrong with the truck? End frame done on the engine, by the dealer.
Now we had to bid it out.
Oh, bid it out, so you got the cheapest bid. What year's the truck? Okay. Hey, one other question. If this thing don't work for us, if we get down the road five years, Lord willing, most of us still here, what have we got to do to open it, sell back up and start using the county landfill again?
Well, that is an interesting, it's interesting you said that. What you can do is, you don't have to completely close the landfill. You could close three-quarters of it and leave the one end open. And so long as you put some trash in it every year, and so long as you had intermediate cover enough while you're not using it, you could theoretically keep it open for a fairly extended period of time. And the permit you have to build the next cell doesn't ever really expire. So you could close pretty much everything, and then someday open that last piece. That is an option.
And, and that might, and just, I'm, and just interrupt you one more time, but I've always been big about Plan B. Suppose you did have a crazy storm.
Yeah.
Trash has got to keep moving somewhere, so we need, we, you know what I'm saying, trash.
The building needs to be big enough to hold fourteen days worth of trash, or something, thirty days, or whatever you suggest. You being an engineer, whatever, you build it into, yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, so there, there are a lot of options to consider. I don't, I, I don't suspect I'm gonna come back to you with a final number, depending on the direction you give me here tonight, and say, wow, you can save a fortune here. I do think this is a long-range plan.
Just a good, a good starting point would be if you could give us a per-ton number.
Right.
From a convenience center or from a tipping station, of what it costs the county. And that's the, the truck, the bid, and you can give us a range.
Sure.
And then it's simple math, just times about seventeen thousand tons.
It is.
And we spent, spent a million five.
Right.
At ninety dollars a ton right now, so if we save.
We've gotta be careful, because that million five won't all go away. That's, we've gotta, that's, we've gotta be careful. Right, that's the math we've gotta make sure we can identify.
But you can do that math, and show us, this is your fixed cost.
Yes.
And then the, the bid going.
I have a question, too. You say we could take our own trucks, say, and go to Amelia, the ones that are closed.
Yes.
Can we get the twenty-three tons in our trucks, or what would be?
Those trucks are roughly, the compactors hold about ten tons.
Right, okay.
But that's a good load, I mean.
It's a good road, load for a ten-wheeler truck.
Right.
Good load, and, and it's a short trip. I have the mileage on there, I think it's, you know, twenty miles, some trips.
So if they charging us a thousand, Dickie, and we doing it for five hundred, the county be generating a little income from it.
With savings, anyway.
Saving money.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, you definitely-
Saving money, you wouldn't be generating any income.
Because then, again, you don't have to bring it to the station.
You don't have to unload it, reload it.
Right.
And that's a, you know, that's a, a county job, that's somebody keeps a job.
Yeah, I wanna see all them guys keep a job.
Well, and see, if you, if you look at this, and I, I know, Mr. Hope, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the suggestions previously before was because it's on a lease, and it does the least amount of volume. It's closing Genito, sending them to seven twenty-three. Seven twenty-three is a short trip right to Amelia. The one in Blackstone is a short trip right to Cambridge. So that's what he's talking about, about us doing our own hauling.
Bringing it up here.
That's what I was asking, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, and both of those have their own compactors. Bible Road has very little room to expand in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, they don't have any room.
Just will bring that to the landfill and put it in the, in the building.
Seven twenty-three is, is Mr. Bowen had, had previously told me, too, got that short piece of land right there beside it. You can do almost anything you want to at seven twenty-three. And expand it, put a second compactor, they can do anything you want to.
Well, and remember, that's where the internet is going.
Oh, right there, that's right.
Fifty by fifty, just depends on.
That's going out.
So we'd had good service there at that site. But it just-
And then the towns could also, you'd have the option with the towns to either go to the transfer station, or they could go directly to the landfills also.
Well, like you have Lafferty currently doing all of Burke was trash, which we could expand that one right there at seven twenty-three, and it'd be even more convenient, because they bring in all the towns right there, in the Nottaway anyway.
Right.
You had made mention one option about us getting more trash. Me personally, I don't want one more piece of paper in Nottaway County than come from a Nottaway County resident. Because you said we, we got the sale for four years, right now it needs to be closed. That's gonna cut that number of time down. Then you said five and a half years on the next sale, that's gonna cut that down. Then what do we do?
Well.
So I don't think that really is an option.
Well, it could be a short-term option, because let's say you decide you wanna build the transfer station, but you've got all this space, and you wanna just utilize it as a one-time deal. You know, could you, could you get trash to fill it up, so that you could then close it? But again, there's, there, you've got so much competition around you for tonnage.
That can handle it cheaper than we can. We can get rid of a lot of this equipment out there. You, some of that ninety-dollar tonnage, fixed cost, you said, such as equipment, these guys are saying that can be inside the building or hauling the trash.
They'd be in the building hauling the trash. You wouldn't need all the landfill equipment. You, the leachate, you're still gonna have to haul. You know, leachate truck that you're fixing, you're still gonna have to deal with.
Which is a two thousand seven truck, twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Once you get it covered, leachate is nothing but rainwater and garbage juice that runs to the bottom, okay? Once you put a cover on it, it starts to dry out. It's not gonna dry out like that, but it will reduce it. So the more cover we can put on it, you actually have part of the landfill already covered. There's one small section that was covered.
Yeah, I think so.
But as we cover more of it, and that's, you know, we-
So the volume goes down, we can go ahead and get covers on it, leave a.
Right.
A space, if we get a storm, or we get, something happens, then we, okay.
And, and another landfill in Virginia has done that. They actually covered a section with capacity, and they decided they needed it, and they opened it back up again. So I mean, it's been done. It can be, it absolutely is allowed to be done. And then that, again, that other cell that you have is still a reserve cell someday that you could use.
You said that permit never expired?
The permit's not gonna expire, no.
So what is a realistic timeframe that you could provide us a cost-benefit analysis?
I'd say probably sixty days, I could have something to you.
Would that involve reaching out to several different landfills to, or just getting a general knowledge, idea of what they're gonna charge?
I'll reach out and do some research. I mean, they're not gonna be binding numbers, because again, it's gonna go out to public bidding. Some of them may be hesitant to, you know.
We're just, we're looking for a range, just a range.
And I'd like to get it with and without trucking, as, as in if we get them guys some decent trucks, and they interested in doing it for the county to save the county some money, maybe that'd be an option. They're not hauling it for free. So, so maybe we can capture that income.
Absolutely.
We'd just like to see some numbers, now that we're entering in budget preparation time, and long-range planning is in effect. We need to see some numbers that will affect our bottom line.
I think, I think for this year, you're, you're running just like normal.
Just normal.
So we need to understand what the costs are in regards to a building, and, you know, figure out that expense. But as far as, as far as running, it's just like last year.
So we could realistically prepare for twenty twenty-six.
The concrete and the, and the dirt work, if you make it pretty nice, where they can push it off, will cost as much or more than the steel building itself.
The voting's pretty inexpensive, it's, it's the site work.
Japhne, is twenty-six as far as closed, tipping?
All right, the, I, I may can ask, ask Mr. Hope, just a couple of questions, reconfirm previous thing that may, that may clear up some of the questions that they're asking. It'll be a series of questions. So, so number one, what they're talking about, it takes roughly a year to build a transfer station. Correct. So, and that's, like you said, cement, structure, and, but it's the prep work, site work that takes the longest period of time. Whether, whether or not you may need a runoff, serine or whatnot, to catch the water.
New expense.
That's right. Okay, so, so, and with that, there was a couple of items that, that may be in here. You're talking the ton, ton per day right now, what we're paying roughly, it's ninety dollars. I can't remember the exact figure, what, what a reasonable target per ton, once you get into your transfer station and get your costs down, the target per ton with all costs included, capital and everything. Won't that around fifty, fifty-something that is the target?
Probably in that range.
Yeah, almost cut, trying to cut this thing in half.
Well, but again, we have to be careful. I don't wanna give you false hope, because there is, again, it's fixed costs.
Right.
Your, your, your monitoring is probably a hundred and thirty thousand a year, just in the monitoring cost. Your leachate is gonna continue. So some of these costs will still continue. Your hauling of your, you know, the trash around the convenience centers, that's in those budget numbers. And so it's not quite like, okay, if we did a transfer station, if it's ninety and it's fifty, it's gonna be in half.
Right, right. Yeah, I understand, I, I just-
Kind of to your point about, really, and Mr. Collins' point, is really, we need to do the math and make some projections.
All right, so a couple, a couple of other things with that, then, is the, the other piece of land, I think if I remember correctly, was fourteen parcels. Now, at today's rate, the current one, on the low end, two point five million to build the sale, times fourteen, that's thirty-five million dollars.
What, what are you, what is the fourteen parcels coming from?
That is the eighty or seventy-some acre, acres of land that is adjacent to the landfill now, where they were talking about possibly going in there. So at today's cost, but you keep in mind, now, you build these-
It's gonna rise.
That's right. But at today's cost, not building those, just those fourteen sales, and actually, if you add the other one that's available, that's thirty-seven point five million dollars that you don't have to spend.
It is, but, but-
Over forty years.
I was gonna say, the fourteen sale, you said fourteen sales?
Mm-hmm.
Each sale is five years, as it says, just rough average. So that's seventy years.
What, but you started adding for your additional.
For your additional trash you mean?
That's right, the increase in trash.
So you're gonna cut your time back on each sale?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying.
So, so when you start there, that's thirty-seven and a half million dollars savings. Also, right now, seven point eight, and it rises a hundred and thirty thousand a year right now, currently. So right now, one more year, we gotta have eight million dollars on hand roughly for the closure. So the sooner you close that, the better off you are. Now, that'll give you roughly ten years left. So in ten years, at a hundred and thirty, and that cost changes as you, if you have two sales open, when you construct one, and when you have another one operate, it doubles. Now you're looking at a quarter million that one year, until you get this one closed and start emptying it and that, and you're gonna have that overlap. So with that, you're looking at a potential cost of growing close to twelve million dollars for closure, if you continue to use your sales, which that's another four million dollar savings, minimum, right there. You're looking at forty-one point five million dollars that you have to come up with. That's before you have to take care of the stream that's running through that property. You got stream runoff that's gotta be protected. That's what he was talking about, it's very costly. So before you can dump it-
Well, you gotta look at the cost of buying some more land, and if you got, if it costs so much to take it, put the buffers in, then you go buy some more land, put the sale somewhere else.
That's right, that's right. But see, the county already owns this, so what do you do with this? So that's another project for another time. But what, what we're saying here, before we even get those side-by-side comparison numbers, how to trickle this cost down, potentially, over fifty years, fifty years, you're already saving a minimum of forty-one million dollars.
So do we go into it with the mindset of these, these guys, I trying to, wanting to send all this trash out of that Butler building? Or don't be in a hurry to send it all out, we're gonna keep our cell open anyhow, instead of us putting, how many times have we said it, seven, how many times?
As long as your cell's open, you can't start your thirty-year, thirty-year, your thirty-year clock on closure.
No, but he said we can keep part of one of them cells open, just, right?
We could, but the thirty-year clock does start when you have the final closure.
When you have the final closure. Of that sale.
Yep, so you're-
Of that specific sale, correct?
Well, it's gonna be of the whole land.
Whole landfill.
Right. In other words, if part of it's open.
So then that goes back to what you said, Bill, if, if we get a big storm in, we can't use it there.
Well, that-
Because otherwise, our clock is ticking.
But it's, you're kinda in the landfill business, or you're not.
Is that the way we're going with it? In or there ain't?
Well, that, that area where you're not building the cell, that could be a lay-down area for emergencies, waste.
You just put something to catch it on top of the ground, you mean?
No, you don't really, you don't have to really put anything down, which you do. In an emergency, there's a, there's a permitting process where you can have a temporary disposal area.
Okay.
And so what you do is get, you know, where am I gonna put my trash? It's too much, I can't handle the transfer station. You can get a permit to put it there temporarily, and then you process, you have to clean it up and take it away. And it's not food garbage, it's really storm debris and those kind of things. But that's, so long as you have the room to do that, and you certainly have the room and, and the planning to do that. You have vegetation areas now that you, you know, doesn't go in a landfill, that's, that would continue.
We had that ice storm, that was a, you should've seen the mountains of-
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And see, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hope, but in, in that situation like he's talking about now with the storm debris, if we closed, and I mean, let's say we went to construction, we started construction by some point later in this year, or something like that, on a transfer station, your landfill's still operating, okay?
Right.
Then once the transfer station is fully operational, everything has been switched over, you can close that cell, hit your thirty-year clock. Where that last sale that has not been developed, that can be your lay-down area.
Yeah.
And you never have to do anything, and your thirty-year clock is punched.
Yep. I would say that once you finally put the curtain over this, pun intended, I think it's time to put it to bed.
There you go. There you go.
Again, it just, you don't have enough trash and, and, you know, this way you, and I'm not saying that you're not gonna have increased cost in transfer, cause you are. Gasoline's gonna go up, trucking's gonna go up.
That, that, that's what we're gonna have to get into, that four or five-year contract he was talking about.
Well, but Amelia, yes, but Amelia has seventy years of life. I think Ludenberg has sixty or seventy years of life too. And, you know, so there's plenty of room, and if seventy years from now, you have to take the trash further, it just.
But it's a much better fixed, you know, situation where you're not getting surprised by, by, oh, this happened at the landfill, we need to move.
That's right.
You know, this money.
Yes, it's, it's a much cleaner.
We can bid our fuel costs, we can update trucks on a, you know, every five years, whatever we need to do, you can budget it.
Well, y'all may remember, I, I, I don't know if y'all remember, uh, or not, but twice, and I know, I believe the last time was, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was either nineteen or eighteen.
They got the air conditioner on in there.
Yeah, it feels good too.
Man, what's wrong with you there?
And then, um, I'm hot-blooded, bro.
Take that coat off.
Yeah. So.
Let me put mine on.
But, but the county borrowed from itself one million dollars twice to get out of the red and still ain't got out of the red.
So it's a big budgeting. I would like to, I would like to see what the Scott Kennedy deal is, cause it was specifically said that that, I, I think you might have heard it already. They got a big overkill of a tipping station, if that's what you wanna call it, for what they really needed.
Well, I give you a.
Cause they said it's pretty massive.
Roanoke City, twenty years ago, built the Taj Mahal transfer stations. In fact, it was called that. It had a train in it that would load up the trash into a train and the train would go up a spur to a landfill to be put in a landfill. They were in the red for fifteen years, serious red, and a lot of it was based on the volume. They thought that, well, we're gonna get, you know, a hundred thousand tons of trash, and they charged fifty-five dollars a ton, twenty years ago, fifty-five dollars a ton. And all the private haulers in City of Salem said, heck no, we could run into Amelia for thirty-five dollars a ton.
Right.
And they did, and they went right in the red because they built this based on a mathematical assumption that they didn't control.
Mm-hmm, makes sense.
I think the only assumption we, we really looking for here, and I, and it sounds like this, cut the cost, save the money, even though it's long-term. I mean, you stop, I believe, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I, I, and I think I've shared this with some of you before. It almost seems like that even at fifty years, by the time the side-by-side comparisons may come in on some of this, it's an easy one million dollar per year saving over the next fifty years. And that's a million a year we were going to have to come up with, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you build the next cell, you're gonna have to write a check for two million dollars before you put a piece of trash in. Really, by the time that gets built in five years, it'll probably be three million dollars or four.
And not only that, for the cost of just opening that, we have the transfer station built and possibly a million saved.
Yes. A transfer station, again, is, you know, I would recommend a modest, very functional transfer station.
Oh, we love modest around here now.
Modest and functional.
We're very modest.
Love modest.
We're in the country, we need modest.
Well, and I, and I, and I know we all got, still got a lot of questions and everything, but just short of getting those, I, I, I know you got a feel of the questions that they want on, on those costs and everything. And if we can go ahead, if you, if you think you can be ready in sixty days, I would love if, if the board's in agreement with this, this is February, March, April. If April's work session, which would be the second Tuesday of April, if, and if you got that together, we would love to have that work session prepped and.
I'll have something for you.
Ready for you.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, hold on, she asked me, is, can we do the budget prep? I'm with, it, it, this is, I'm gonna have to budget for the landfill like I've always.
That's right.
That's right.
So it's no, it's no.
I'm talking about can we fit that in our meeting because we're gonna have all that going on too.
Oh, we're having a work session anyway, the work session.
One of the things that you might consider now and is, is having some, some money for, so the numbers look good and you wanted to start the planning. So we're gonna have to do the site development, the construction documents for you for the transfer station. So even if we don't build it this year, we might build it in your next budget year.
All right.
We need some planning money, architecture money, engineering money.
Get, get you queued up so that in your twenty-six budget.
So you'll basically give a startup cost evaluation.
I need to do some planning money, I got you.
Planning, engineering, that type of thing.
Yeah, planning, engineering, construction, and then, you know, then, then the bidding of the, hauling the trash and those bids, that's almost the easy part.
Well, guys, just so y'all know too, this gentleman and his team was the ones that caught the E nine one one funds being used. And I think it was like seventy-five percent of them was being used, and I think it was like a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars a year is what it came up to offset the cost in the landfill. That's money you're gonna free up too, and what you do with that. I mean, that's money that's reoccurring every year, a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars, and that's only seventy-five percent of those funds.
That'll, that'll be debt service on the radio system.
Yeah, we already got it spitting. But, but it's something that we had that normally we wouldn't have.
We got plenty of places to put.
Well, we certainly do. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to hearing from you.
Please feel free.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Need information from the offices, let me know. And he said he would stay around for a little bit in case y'all got another question or something too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hope. All right, board members, that was, that was great news, as was expected, that's.
Thank you, John, for bringing that to us.
It's thirty-four to seven degrees in here, time to kill hogs.
I love it.
Hold up, kill hogs.
Some of y'all probably not old enough to remember when the county decided to go in the landfill business. I do remember.
That was before my time.
When the town stopped, when the town stopped burying.
When, when I, certain members of the board said, we gonna take care of our own trash.
It used to be a dump in Berkville, cause I was a kid, that's what we took in trash.
It still is.
It still is, it's just come.
But what I'm telling you is, I can remember when that happened, and I'm like, why? Because somebody wanted to put a private landfill in the county. Asked for zoning to put a private landfill here.
Oh, it's that garbage from New York?
No, this was just gonna be a, a kind of a local thing, and the board said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of our own trash.
Which I, when I looking at that, I don't know that they didn't do the, do the right thing versus letting privatizing that landfill. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I know exactly what you're saying.
But I tell you what, while it's, while we talking that loud, and this is a work session meeting, I got a heck of a problem with twenty-eight thousand dollars in the end line on a two thousand seven truck. Who made that call?
It was.
It started out eighteen thousand, and then they did, when they got into the truck, it went on up to twenty-eight, should have replaced the motor, but it started out at eighteen thousand.
Yeah, it should have replaced the motor.
Right, well. We need a truck. Do you, we didn't, we didn't pay a hundred and some thousand dollars to a, a trucking agency to take our leachate, so here's another problem. So, here's another problem, so you know, so you know. We, we ain't got no, nobody's taking our leachate now. We done went to Petersburg, Richmond, Hopewell, blah, blah, blah. We gotta get, this is on the board meeting, I gotta bring in two tanks to hold the leachate to get it out, off the ground, because we ain't got nobody to take the leachate.
Are these tanks, truck tanks that the, a road tractor come hook to and then carry it off?
Yeah, we rent, no, uh-uh, uh-uh. We just rent the tank so we can pump ourselves. Nobody wants leachate. It is a problem, y'all.
So where's it been going to?
It's been going to Blackstone. Blackstone can't take it because ammonia level's too high.
So where the hell where they go?
In a tank that we getting fixing to purchase.
So how, how much, how much time you got for these tanks?
Well, we're hoping DQ don't show up tomorrow.
You just told him.
I know. But I don't have to tell you, right, I don't have to tell you.
That's just a figure of speech.
Right, right.
This is a rain problem. We've had a lot of extraordinary.
I mean, Gary's walking out the door, but I should gotta talk to him, but anyway, we got, we got problems, gentlemen, ladies.
Well, check with, hey, in the morning.
Added to your list.
Check with, uh, Royal Oaks Farm out of Lynchburg. They can help you. Royal Oaks Farm out of Lynchburg.
Okay. That don't sound right.
I'll tell you who they helping.
They have to treat this stuff, you know.
That's fine, check with them, all right. They get in the hatchways, I'm sure they can get that.
But no, as far as we go, look, it was easier with a truck to move to Blackstone and unload it. Now you gotta go to Lynchburg or where we gotta go. You hear what I'm just saying? I just want you to know that.
Gas is three thirty-five a gallon.
And you got an old clunker truck that you just put twenty-eight thousand.
We need to get out of the landfill, but it, it, the bad news I heard tonight was he said you're still gonna be in a leachate business. I went, oh my God.
Can you put another pond in or?
Yeah, you gonna, once they do the engineering and the site survey and all that, they'll tell you about your runoff from that area, how big a leachate pond you're gonna need.
But I did hear him say he could, you could cover it in with droughts.
Yeah, that's right.
I listened to that, so.
That's right.
What Oil Oaks is gonna do, they compost it up here.
Okay.
They got a massive play.
All right.
But they don't come cheap.
All right, guys, then, uh, our solar ordinance, public hearing discussion.
Everybody get a chance, I'll, I'll come and do one of the, the, um, SB six ninety-seven. Came out of, uh, up in Richmond today, and it takes away the authority of the county to decide whether or not you're gonna have solar. It's not the law yet, it's gotta go through the House, and it's gotta be signed by the governor. Uh, Nottaway has got a meeting next week. Joint meeting to approve our ordinance or to present our ordinance to the public with the planning commission. And so my question to John was, you know, do we still have that meeting, since we're now kind of in a gray area of what the state's gonna do? I've kinda come around to, we still just go ahead and have our, our meeting? Uh, Mr. Rourke said that you have sixty days after the meeting to go ahead and, and take on, to approve the ordinance, vote on the ordinance? And, you know, we've done, come this far, let's go on and, and adopt our, or present our ordinance.
Because if the, if the state does adopt it, just so I understand correctly, and has, they already have, correct?
One house at a.
Senate, came out of the Senate, now it's going over to the House.
So if they do, but that's gonna be on like a, a fifty?
No.
No?
Those two died. So this one, I'll read it to you real quick. No local ordinance shall include limits on the total amount, density, or size of any ground-managed solar facility or energy storage facility until such time that that total area under panels, that's not what's inside fences, under panels within locality exceeds four percent of the total area, uh, within the county locally. Or any prohibitions on the use of solar panels that comply with generally accepted national environmental protection and product safety standards such as those set forth in subdivision A. Provided that such installation is in compliance with any provision of a local ordinance that establishes criteria and requirements for siting. The provisions of this subsection shall not apply to any site that was the subject of an application to construct a solar facility or energy storage, storage facility submitted to the locality before July first, twenty twenty-four. This is, this is an odd, this is an odd statement. Nothing in this subsection shall require a locality to approve an application for solar or energy storage projects or limit a locality's authority to establish criteria and requirements for siting, including those related to tree cover canopy and stormwater management that are otherwise in compliance with this subsection and existing local zoning authority. So that's where you end up in court.
Mm-huh.
I just think, my, my opinion is this, we need to get our ordinance on the books. If the governor vetoes this thing, which he may, or the House may not pass it, we will have an ordinance in place. If we don't do something and then we wait to see what they do, then we're gonna be at the mercy of everybody coming in, wanting to do it before we have an ordinance. My feeling is, planning commission committee that drew up this ordinance, it was kind of a compromise thing. We tried to limit the size, we wanted to make it so there would be something that could be done, protect the surrounding land on us, protect the surrounding area, and still have something available. Now, uh, who knows what's gonna come out of Richmond, we just don't know. But if we've got something in place, they can't come to us and say, oh, you don't have an ordinance, so we're gonna go ahead and, we wanna do this, or we wanna do that. That's my feeling. I think we oughta, we oughta proceed with our ordinance, get it passed, and then if the gov, state says, oh, that's no good, then it's no good. But then we can say, hey, we tried, we had one, and now you're telling us we can't have one, but hey, at least it's a chance, it's a try.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, there's a couple of things. I spoke to Kyle Shreve, he's with, uh, Vaness Strategies, and they've, they've sort of been a guide to rural localities on the south side. Uh, John Anzavino engaged with him when he began work on the solar ordinance. I reached out to Kyle today because he's been a great source of information for us. Uh, that's what I've been passing along to y'all with my emails, seemingly almost every day. I asked him, I go, what's the next steps for this? He says, well, it's after Crossover, where I presume that's, it's moving from the Senate to the House. The bill will be referred in the House to the counties, cities, and towns committee, where it will be referred to one of the subcommittees, likely subcommittee number two, whatever that is. It'll be up to the chair to docket the bill from there. I doubt it'll be heard this week. We're looking, we're likely looking at next week before it's heard, so it'd be next week, cause I got this, uh, received this, well, today, wow, I thought it was later than that. I do have a list of the people who said, uh, yes to it, if y'all would like me to forward that to you, so you can send stuff.
I would certainly like to see it.
Okay.
If you forward that to me.
How about if I print out copies and, uh, hand them out to y'all?
Oh, either email them or whatever, don't matter, scan and email them.
I also wanna give you all the full text. Um, what Mr. Collins said was absolutely on point. That's the last section of this proposed ordinance. Um, one thing I did wanna say regarding holding the hearing was, we've already had one advertisement, um, already, and we've already invested that money. Talking to a prudent Hoosier here. Um, but I, I just, I think that we, we owe to the public, we've been talking about it, and.
So, so, uh, Mrs. Odi, to go on, let's just say, everybody listens to Mr. Ingram, which that don't always happen, but let's pretend everybody agrees with Mr. Ingram. So let's look at the clock. So we got a joint meeting next Tuesday with the planning commission. Planning commission can only recommend to the board. So they could recommend to approve the, um.
Ordinance.
Proposed ordinance.
Proposed ordinance, and then the board could vote, they would have to vote on it in March, right?
Yes.
No, they have, um, once the planning commission.
I'm, I'm trying to see if it's durable, which you bring up this thing.
Right, exactly.
But this is in, um, this, what you're talking about is, it's a text amendment to the ordinance, and there's a time limit. And if you'll forgive me, if y'all wanna move on, I can, uh, send that citation from our zoning ordinance.
March twenty-first.
And I believe it's something like sixty days or ninety days, y'all have to act.
I guess the question is.
After this public hearing.
If we have a public hearing, let me break it up like, and, and if we have a public hearing, the, the planning commission gets to go first. Right, to, to say, I recommend it, right?
Yes, well.
They can do it that night, is what I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
They could do that night. Could the board vote on the same night?
I don't see why not. I mean, if y'all are satisfied with the public hearing.
Anyway, yeah, yeah, and, 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 right, and Mr. Ingram and everybody here realizes that if the governor, if it does change, we'll have to do another pl, public hearing and change the ordinance to fit mandated by the state.
Well, we won't have an ordinance.
No, we won't, because.
State's just gonna tell us what we gotta do.
We won't even have an ordinance.
Their ordinance will replace ours.
Correct on that?
Right.
I'm sorry, Ms. Dorn, I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, what I was gonna say is, what I heard when I listened to the, I believe it's the second reading or the third reading, was that, I believe it's Joe Lurk or another representative from counties, um, say that we would have, I believe, until January twenty twenty-five to incorporate, to adopt what I'm calling a blanket ordinance for all localities.
But correct me if I'm wrong, though, the county has the ability to say no to every application?
We won't, we won't if the state passes.
We wanted this passed.
See, we want, not had no authority.
That's the last sentence.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
So if somebody wants to put panels up against the Four Pickett reservoir, we can say no.
That's right.
That's our water supply.
You probably have to give a reason or something, right?
Yeah, so that's our water supply.
Right, right off that.
Up against the Nottaway River.
Yeah, so basically, even though it's taking it away in a sense, the county still has a case-by-case basis to fight big projects.
Right, and we can't, we can.
I ain't so sure if it do or not, because they tried that with the biosolite, and I came up here and it was five hundred people up here, and the state passed it. And all the board members frowned and said, we tried, didn't work. The biosolite came.
But it's in writing right there.
This is, this is the last sentence, let me read the last sentence again.
If.
Nothing in this subsection shall require a locality to approve an application for solar or energy storage projects or limit a locality's authority to establish criteria and requirements for siting, including those related to tree canopy and stormwater.
Read, read the first sentence again, Bill, please.
Nothing in this subsection shall require a locality to approve.
Shall require a locality. Nothing shall require it to do it.
No, if we can say no.
Because other words, the state says it could be approved. That's what I, that's the way I read that, listen to it. That's right.
It could, it could still, you're right, it could still happen.
Right.
But we don't, we can set our criteria.
And I think we should.
And that's, you know, so we still have an ordinance, and we said this is, you know, this is a, a place we can do it, this is a place we can do it, just like our ordinance does now. So, but that's where, so you say no to you, and I say yes to you, and you're gonna sue me.
And, and because it's not fair. That's exactly right. We gotta make this, this thing fair.
Well, that's why you.
We can't just go out for the big timber company, we gotta treat the man on ten acres the same way.
That's why you want an ordinance that has the requirements in it, so.
Such as the setback.
If somebody comes to us and they don't meet the requirements of the ordinance, we can say no and nobody can sue us.
True, but it, but it gotta, yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent, but it gotta be, uh. True, but it, but it gotta, yeah, I agree with that a hundred percent, but it gotta be, uh, a legitimate ordinance. We don't want it to fall into what the Hogue houses did in the nineteen eighties from Nodaway County, to where they make it the way you just absolutely can't do it.
Alright.
Uh, what I, what I would point out, um, is that we, we're gonna have, we're gonna see changes, from what I understand, what they gave to the, uh, to the House. I think we might see some friendly changes on our side. But he's absolutely right, um, what y'all were saying about, you know, we, we can turn down, we aren't required to approve it, it's not like Phil House, you know, with FCC's oversight on those, cause I know that's a sticky wicked, uh, county administrator would state, but I would point out, we cannot put limits on the total amount.
Did you say sticky wicked?
Yeah.
I probably have said that.
You can't base your denial on it, cause it's two thousand acres.
Right, and my.
Right.
But the point I was gonna do is that we have thirty-seven findings, because these are gonna be special exceptions, and we can, we already, in our proposed ordinance, we already have criteria to look at, but we also have to, I, as staff, have to complete thirty-seven findings of fact for every special exception that comes through, that's why our packets are so thick.
You gonna be one busy man, Gray.
I am, but.
Because the ordinance I'm thinking about, that just out loud, not talking to the planning, would be, is, we do make it strategic, but we take a case-by-case basis and, and analyze a case-by-case basis, listen to the adjacent landowner, and if they in opposition of it, take that under consideration.
Yeah, and the other thing we need to remember too, uh, folks, is that within the two transmission lines, there's only, correct me if I'm wrong, roughly fifteen percent, that could be a percent or two, of the total county area that is even within a range of being able to do this.
Yeah, because, um.
I saw the email a day.
There's more than two transmission lines.
But it, it amounts to about eighty-some hundred acres.
But that's a, that's an industrial situation, that's selling power, and it's going to Northern Virginia, we have some local people that wanna just sell into the grid.
So that's a different, either eighty-some hundred acres.
Yeah, they can, they can cite that anywhere, put the equipment there and pump it into our grid, but it's a small, small.
If you look, there's more than one trans, more than two transmission line.
Okay.
Because you got the one coming from Chase City that goes to Crewe, well, then you got one going up to Luckstone, you got one crossing Steve's Brothers property.
That's the same, that's the same one Luckstone, that's the same.
And you've got, and you've got one that comes down from Nodaway, if you come into this meeting, it goes all the way down to Pickett, across on forty.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it's one running east to west, one running north south.
I don't think they're exact same.
The line's limited to what they can carry, the capacity they can carry, too. Uh, we had a young, uh, gentleman from Virginia Energy, it's part of the state, um, I think part of the Clean Energy Act, um, VCEA, and he said, yeah, we only have, I believe, one power line that can hold, you know, carrying all this, um, power. So it's, when I spoke to Barry, Sherri Bucktrick, uh, last, two weeks ago, she's with the Conservation, um, with Virginia Outdoor Foundation, I do the conservation easements. She said, people put conservation easements on their property, and I think they, they might help with some things, so, uh.
So you're saying we fight until the lines get full?
Until y'all.
Hey, man, them energy companies got big money, they put bigger line.
I'm not, that, I was, I was joking.
No, I know that was, but, but I was just talking about what Dickie was talking about on them lines, they will put bigger line, they haven't big as that right China.
The whole point of this is, they passed a law saying they had to be energy, whatever, sufficient.
Deco.
By twenty thirty-five, and it's not gonna happen.
Right, and they cannot, they cannot.
You talking about the big green, Dickie.
They cannot create that.
The thing is that, uh, Charlotte and Pennsylvania, I believe they've created between eight and ten thousand, um, acres, uh, for this.
I will, I misspoke, eight to, eight to ten, uh, megawatts, or some thousand megawatts, I mean, they're some of the largest, two largest producers in the state. And then you have, um, I think it's, uh, Southampton or Sussex, who has a fair amount, all, it all comes down, like Senator Stanley said, it all comes, we, this stuff always gets pushed down the south side. It's been like that since Texel's went with NAFTA and all that, I can't believe I'm talking about this.
Pipe line.
Yeah, but we, we have to, we have to be, I think, very vigilant in protecting our rural territory.
So at the end of the, at the end, we, we decided we're going forth Tuesday.
We're gonna go ahead and have our meeting.
Have our meeting.
And the debate.
And the, the other thing is, that people don't realize, it's like any, any other ordinance, this can be changed.
Right. That's right.
You know, it can be changed, but, but right now, I want us to have an ordinance on the books.
Right, I, I would suggest if y'all had changes that you'd wanna make, maybe offer a friendly amendment as part of your motions and stuff, and I'll mention this to the planning commission as well. I don't see any drastic change from the planning commission perspective, and maybe I'm misreading them, Mr. Ingram.
I'll send you, let me, I sent some for discussion with the boys, with the board.
Well, I would only have one, and that's if, if the technology becomes more effective, that they be required to reduce the footprint of the current, what's on the panel. Know what's, if there's more efficient panels, they can do the exact, if it can go from ten acres to six acres, then they be required to do that, whatever's on the panel.
They're approved for what they're approved for, and if more, I understand what you're saying.
I'd like to see the same, now.
Yep. Then you can start planting some tomatoes or something around.
Why don't they current it in Richmond, put them on top of them buildings down there?
I don't have my ordinance with me, there's a, there's a paragraph in there that talks about that, that setbacks can be increased based on topography. I would like to say that, see, increased or decreased based on topography and dimensions, you know, cause our parcels aren't all square, we got, you know.
Ain't flat either.
For me to see a square one.
So you have, you have a, you might find somebody that's got eight hundred foot setbacks on three sides, but he's four fifty on one side.
Yeah, and it all depends on, uh, if a house is fifteen hundred square, it's fifteen hundred feet from it, and it's not a family member, the setback goes, I believe, Mr., correct me if I'm wrong, but it goes to fifteen hundred feet or so. But other, otherwise.
If we're out, you know, if we're in the Midwest and everything was a section and six hundred forty acres, then.
Yeah, that's right, a quarter section, yeah.
Alright, well, guys, so we can, so we can go ahead and move on then, so it, it, it sounds like the consensus of the boards to continue to move forward with the, uh, February twentieth joint meeting with the planning commission and the board supervisors, uh, for that public hearing, so, um, and of course, we don't take any action at these meetings anyway, it's just a consensus. There's no action to be taken, it's already been properly advertised and, uh, noted, uh, so we'll move on from that. Right now, we'll go to the comments from the members of the board, uh, Mr. Collins, do you have anything, sir?
Um, I'm gonna be, I was invited on March seventh to attend the Blackstone Women's Club, and I appreciate that invitation, and I'll see them there.
I bet you do, good deal. Mr. Ingram. I plan on being at the, uh, groundbaking for the water system at the proposed animal shelter.
I'm glad you brought that up, wait till they get to me.
I plan on being there tomorrow at three o'clock.
Alright. Ms. Norton.
I also plan on being there tomorrow at the groundbreaking, the water groundbreaking at three o'clock. Also have attended quite a few things lately, um, I'll tell you more about that lady later, and just informed the meeting tonight, very productive, showing our citizens we're trying and making a good faith effort to save money.
Alright.
I agree.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, don't forget about the meeting.
Mr. Toth.
I think it was a very productive meeting tonight, um, I, I thought we learned, I, I specifically learned a whole lot about the landfill. Some stuff that I had a little full knowledge about, most of it I did not, uh, such as the truck, somebody needs to do a better management on, on mechanic and, and preventive maintenance and rebuilding. The groundbreaking for the water line at the animal shelter, if the animal shelter don't come out, what they gonna do, make a great big water park up there?
Planning on going there, Mr. Toth.
Well, Mr. Ingram, I'd like to see it go there, but I, you know, I, I thought about it on the way up here, it just hit me like somebody turned a light on in my switch, in my little brain I got. And I thought the first time my daddy bought me a pony, I wanted that pony so bad, I wasn't got a saddle before he got the pony. And if I was the daddy, I wouldn't have got the pony, just for the reason that little boy got the saddle. But I was, I, 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 hey, I hope it does go there, I wish y'all the luck in the world, we waiting on them numbers, when are we gonna get some numbers?
I was gonna ask, Mr. Bowen, when will we meet with the architect?
It's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
So then, then.
In the very near future.
This is delivery of information, cause you've already had a, you had one meeting with him already, right?
No, I, no, I had a verbal conversation to beg him back.
Okay, so he's back.
So he's back, but, but, and he's gonna come with some, uh, stipulations, I think, in other words, he, he wants to make sure he works for the county.
He does.
And we won't, and I, and I guarantee in that.
Cause I understand that it'll be.
So, so the goal is to keep the same square footage, footprint, and, and meet the state requirements.
Which in return should reduce the cost of, of substantial amount. But tell them, don't get no backhoes up there digging no dirt, cause this man might say that the cost has went up because, you know, materials has gone up, and if we couldn't afford it at the three million, we dang on sure can't afford it anymore than that, I'm just saying, tell them, hold.
I understand what you're saying.
Break that golden shovel like this.
I understand what you're saying.
Do like I used to do, break the handle out of it, then you can work with it.
The idea of, of doing it this way was because Mr. Boswell had people say, when they saw the dirt, they were gonna donate, when they saw that dirt.
Man, I wish I thought somebody could make me a love.
And I, I did see, I did see they, they've up to six hundred thousand.
Oh, really? Well, that, that is one, yeah.
And all the, I saw the article I sent you, Amelia, down the road where Mr. Wooton is the animal control officer, has put first priority for twenty twenty-five in their budget, one point eight million for animal shelter.
Yeah, I've got a copy of those blueprints if anybody wants.
I hope it's more than fifteen, no.
Anyway, um, alright, so, did you have anything, Mr. Bowen?
No, the twelfth day of work, I'm having a ball. I was just saying. I'm enjoying myself, thank y'all.
I bet you.
Alright, so, one quick question, so you're going, you're going, you're, are you going to?
Is this a widely attended event?
Well.
I wouldn't think so.
Well, the reason why I was gonna tell y'all that, it has not been advertised that the board's gonna be there.
So you guys go, you guys.
But you can go, it doesn't matter, all, all five of us can go. Do not discuss county business at any point in time amongst yourselves.
Oh, you talking about up here tomorrow?
Yes.
Don't worry about it.
We are just going to extend good faith effort that, you know, we're, we're happy they made it thus far.
Well, they have two people going, isn't it?
Well, I'm just telling you, e, even in the past, any, any of you can go, even if it's the last minute, if you wanna break off from the stock.
I won't be breaking off at three o'clock.
But I'm just saying, just, just make sure you're not discussing any county business, even if it's someone walks up to you and talk, because it was not advertised if you're there.
Right.
And so it would be an illegal meeting, so I just wanna share that with y'all.
And I hope to see y'all at lunchtime at World Chapel for Lenten service to hear Damian Reh.
Alright, alright, well, board members, I, I don't have anything other than, um, to, to know that the staff has been working very diligently. I, I, I see a lot of energy in that staff, and when I say the staff, I mean all the staff, Mr. Bowen, Ms. Kelly, Buddy, Greg, Susan, Logan, everybody over there, it's just, they're, they're in, they're in a, to me, from, from what I've seen, a very good, positive mindset, they've always done, done a thorough job in their job, but I've just, I was, always been proud of, but I'm even more proud of them now, I mean, just, I, I love seeing the smiles on the faces and everything, and, uh, I love the fact that most of the time, we're all on first name basis, and that tells me, that's a pretty good team, you know, even though in these meetings here, a lot of times, they want you to be appropriate, but, Nicky, um, by the way, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I love each and every one of my, my fellow board members, as well as my citizens, until they make me not.
Well, board members, I entertain a motion to adjourn on that, can I get a second? I want a favor signified by standing up.
You too, thank you.